I share Dennis' concern. We're talking about trailers that are over 50 years old. I'm concerned about getting them into today's code. Is that feasible?
If you're willing to put that much money into a unit, that's my guess, but I don't see it. Abraham's under the assumption he would be able to have his team rehab him for $20,000 with current building prices.
Twenty thousand each.
And with current building prices, I do not see that.
The actual homes themselves are actually in pretty good condition. I mean, the most expensive part of this will probably be the inspections, which I understand and I'm fine with, with whatever those costs, having a licensed electrician plumber and all of that do the reports on it.
All right, let me, go ahead.
This is Bert, Abraham's attorney. Just question on bringing older homes up to, you know, modern code. Does the city have similar requirements for site filled homes that are like 1910 to add additional walls and such through? It's not, the HUD code was really about structural integrity in 1974, 1976, but adding additional insulation is not something that I've seen other cities require.
If according to Indiana's mobile home laws, if you start going into it, you have to bring it up to current HUD standards, have it recertified. These are old enough units that they actually don't even meet HUD standards. So once you get them done, you have to have somebody come out and certify them as a HUD home.
Okay, does HUD has standards for, you know, single family homes as well? I mean, much of the original construction standards were built around safe transportation, but these are, they're not being transported, they're just being remodeled on site.
Correct. And if they're being remodeled on site, they can be made to come up to the residential code.
Typically, they'd be grandfathered in if they predate the code.
They would be grandfathered in if you do not touch any part of it. If you start changing out the wiring, then you have to bring the wiring to current code.
Okay, I'd be interested in seeing the ordinance and case law. Normally, if you change the structure, like if you want to put a bump out on it or addition, you start cutting into the four walls, the only load bearing, that definitely jeopardizes the structural integrity of it. But if you're just, if you're putting in, you know, new flooring, new painting, new panel, new light fixtures, you wouldn't have to add in, you know, additional R-value insulation for a home that wasn't designed and built for.
Correct. If you're not painting, if you're not opening up the wall to replace the electric, you do not have to change, update your electric. But you're gonna have to change out, I know lot 150 is gonna need a new furnace, plain and simple. It's probably gonna need new ductwork, because that's the one that when I walked in, there's a hole right there in front of the furnace through the floor.
Okay, we can, Abraham can certainly look at the specifics with the contract. I know, I own and operate parks myself throughout the Midwest, and we, on an older home like this, sometimes, we may not put it in the furnace, we put in radiator-based more heat, for example, or, you know, different heat pumps and things of that sort, depends on the individual unit. But yeah, the older homes don't have the thickness in the walls, as I mentioned, rather than insulation, you provide additional or other heat sources, while they're still insulated walls, but I mean, they don't have double-pane windows, for example. So there's just, the windows, for example, are definitely not gonna have the same R-value as, you know, a modern window, but same with the 1905 single-family homes that I have. They were built that way, they're to the grandfathered in, you know, and my understanding is, it doesn't matter if you, it's not just penetrating a wall to like change an outlet, it's penetrating the structural components of the wall, which impacts its structural safety.
If you, if you get into that circuit, you have to bring the entire circuit to code.
Okay, I haven't looked at all your code yet. We can certainly look into that and coordinate with the licensed local guys that know, you know, the code better than I.
So are we talking about, so three of the, was it five total that you just rattled off?
There's five total. There's three of them that were brought in by the previous owner, they brought them in, they're newer units, they just never set them up.
Okay, so you're, and they've agreed to take three of them, there's three there they're gonna remove.
There's three older units they're gonna remove.
And they agree to that.
And then there's three other newer units that have never been set up. He was willing to board those up until they can get, somebody to come in and redo them, get them set up.
You're good with that.
I'm good with that.
Now, we're just talking about...
It's just lot 140 and 150 that I disagree with as an evaluation of them.
He's done considerable stuff, seems every time, Abraham. We appreciate you working with us and communicating back to us, but he's done pretty much everything so far, and we, I don't see why we can't say, I'm just throwing this out there, that on those two ones that they're discussing right now, give them another time to evaluate what you're saying and what they need to understand before we, yep, that's just a thought.
If they board them up, that's, you think that, you wanna board them up and allow them to sit on them?
I thought Abraham said that 140 and 150 he wants to rehab.
But maybe they need more time to come to the conclusion that they won't be able to. I don't know how much time they've spent looking at it close like you have, but I'm just, that's just a suggestion. Just keep meeting, we're seeing improvement as we go.
They were supposed to have a licensed contractor already in those units and to give a report to Dennis before this meeting.
Right. And I will say that after, our original meeting was, we were supposed to meet on, I believe, Monday, or Thursday, and then Abraham said that, I believe I shared the email with the board, said that he wasn't able to make it, and he didn't understand why I needed to come in to do an evaluation and meet with him. So there was a little going back and forth on that, and then he reached out to me on Friday, or Thursday, and said that Friday we could meet. And the discussion going back and forth, the original order was sent to Noah, the original contact, he never forwarded information. So Abraham actually, just this week, got the full order that Noah never shared with him.
Which then puts him further behind the eightfold to do a...
Correct.
I would, on 242, 22, and 22, I agree to proceed with them and us out. I appreciate Abraham's willingness to do so. Because of the disconnected communication, I would propose, I'll make a motion that we allow 30 days for an analysis to be performed by Abraham and his team to determine the cost impact, because I, 50, over 50-year-old units, I don't know how much you're willing to spend. I can't imagine that it's gonna be cheap to bring everything up to code that needs to be brought up. I would be willing to give a 30-day extension.
But you wanna give them time to come to that conclusion?
Exactly.
And put in there the analysis by a licensed contractor.
Thank you, to be done by licensed contractors.
Licensed contractor registered with the city?
Yes.
Or just a licensed contractor?
With the city.
I appreciate that. And then on the three that I'm fine with tearing down, and then the other ones that aren't in dispute as far as boarding those up, would 60 days be okay for me to get those done?
Defering to the building commissioner.
I would, I would think that you'd be able to get them boarded up within 30 days.
Yeah, that's fine. So yeah, I should separate that, I guess.
To keep them safe.
Thirty days, that's no problem, getting those boarded up. On the ones that we have to tear down, I'm not confident that we can get that done in 30 days.
I understand.
So if you're up here, 50 days on that.
I understand that aspect of it, because I just, I did just send him the list of contractors to...
Make that motion. So make a motion that we support or approve the demo of like lot 242, 22, and 22 to be done within 60 days, then I move to... Boarded up within... Well, these are gonna be demoed out. You want those, do they need to be boarded up as well in the meantime?
Call.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Ecker.
Yes.
Milner.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Listemberger.
Yes. Okay, that's...
I brought on to say thank you, and thank you, Dennis. I appreciate meeting me on Friday, and thank you to the board for continuing to work with me as we, you know, make this a nice community.
Well, we appreciate what you've done so far, and just continue to encourage you to keep it going.
Yes, I will. Thank you again.
Okay, thank you, Abraham.
The only other thing I have is Red Rock had a contractor come in, he applied for his contractor registration with the city, applied for a building permit, never provided insurance documentation, so I put the permit on hold. He's, well, beyond his 30 days, he did, everybody who's not living in the second story, I went out there because I was out at the airport talking with airport superintendent and noticed somebody on the second floor. So I went over there, they had their, I guess, maintenance guys in there demoing out some of the rooms, and I said, no. So I don't know how you guys wanna handle it, but he's past 30 days to get it fixed.
I don't know what you do about that when you've got a half a building that we've ordered that on, but not the whole building, right?
We can either put a fine on him, or we can hire somebody to perform the work at his expense.
Yep, those are your options.
You're getting good at this. Dennis, you're learning, aren't you?
I am learning, yes.
What's the maximum fine?
Order of repair is $2,500.
I'll make a motion that we vote for $2,500 fine, and if a contractor is not hired to do the work within 30 days, to go ahead and do the, enforce the order.
I'll second that. So you are giving Dennis authority after 30 days to...
Vote in the fine immediately, and then giving him the authority after 30 days, if there's not progress, to go ahead and vote the order.
And that order would be to...
By you vote the order, you mean to hire a contractor to perform the repairs?
Yeah.
And charge that back to the property owner.
I don't think we wanna think about that part of it, though. That would be at our cost, and I don't know what we're talking about here.
It's gonna be expensive.
Yeah, I don't know if you wanna do that yet.
I will rescind my motion.
Okay.
Well, then I...
So, but you will, so now you are saying, fine him the $2,500.
Yes, I'll make a motion to...
Okay, got a motion to...
...$2,500.
And I'll still second. And we got a second. Is that all clear? All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Call.
Yes.
Ecker.
Yes.
Milner, yes. Morrow.
Yes.
Listemberger.
Yes.
Thank you, that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Dennis. So we already did, so tonight, Chief, we're, you're gonna introduce Officer Zach Wallace to discuss some stuff with us, right?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome, Zach.
All right. I sent out an email, but I didn't send it till 4 o'clock, and I apologize, I did not send it to you, Shiloh. I was trying to remember the other one, I forgot. I got copies, you can have my copies. Yeah. But we've had some issues across the country with our firearms that we are issued with discharges, and I'm gonna have Officer Wallace speak to that. He done, started doing a background investigation on it last week, and let you know his findings on that.
So, little bit of background, for those that don't know me. My name is Officer Zach Wallace, I'm a patrolman for the department, have been for just over six years. I'm a firearms instructor, that includes pistol, rifle, and shotgun. I also have 11 and a half years in the Army National Guard, where I've been trained on pretty much every weapon system that we have in small arms. So Chief Weir asked me to look into a problem that I've already been keeping tabs on for a number of years, because that's how long it's been going on. With the Sig Sauer P320 that we carry as a department-issued weapon, has an issue with what is called an uncommanded discharge, it's not negligent discharge. The reason there's a difference in the term for it is because a negligent discharge is just that, it's negligence that happens. Uncommanded is when there is no outside effect from the person wearing the weapon causing it to go off. So since 2016, the uncommanded discharge has been an issue. Prior to that, Sig Sauer had what's become known as the drop fire issue, where if you dropped the 320, it had a risk of going off from hitting the backplate of the weapon just right. Sig Sauer enacted a fix in 2017 for that problem, and claimed that everything was good to go, but it's not the case. Since 2016, before that full upgrade was in effect, we've noticed cases involving uncommanded discharges. The first one happening in Michigan, where an officer had his 320 fired, he was only getting out of his patrol car. He wasn't touching at all, just getting in and out of the vehicle is enough for it to go off, which in our line of work happens daily, as Dwayne knows. Sometimes you're in a rush and you hit that center console kinda hard, that's enough to set it off in the holster. So I have, I don't know if John sent it to everybody, the article I looked up from a training group called Christian Warrior Train, they train security groups for churches across the country, because unfortunately, that is becoming a thing that we have to worry about. So they put together a report that has a number of cases that are currently ongoing or have already been settled to Sig Sauer. Right now, there's an untold amount that Sig Sauer has settled with on these cases. The cases that are open, there's only two right now that openly have been settled for $13 million between the two. The rest of them, SIG has ordered a NDA to be signed by the defendant in those cases, so nothing is known on the outcome. SIG claims that there is no issue with the 320, understandably so, because they have a $500 million contract with the US military to supply the M17 and M18 service pistol, which also has a problem, because it's the same design. The only difference is the color, and that they have manual thumb safety, which does not stop the issue that the 320 has. So there's been, as I said, multiple cases where this has happened across the country. Multiple, there's been at least two in Michigan, Texas, Florida, Massachusetts, Wisconsin. Wisconsin is the main one that people refer to, that's actually caused a lot of stir with that. It was during a vehicle search, the officer was searching a vehicle, had another officer with him, officer's weapon goes off and shoots his partner in the thigh, sent him into the hospital. And they both filed lawsuits against SIG, and that's still ongoing. That was 20, 2022, September of 2022. And this is not just a law enforcement problem, it's been happening to civilian weapons as well. They're all the same, there's no difference for us and a civilian weapon. The legal actions and lawsuits, like I said, they're multiple still ongoing. 2022 and 2023, the two that I referenced, one was in Georgia and one was in Pennsylvania. The one in Georgia was a civilian, Pennsylvania was a police officer. Combined total of over $13 million. The Oklahoma case was a holster 320, and that individual, sorry, there's another individual on top of the two that have already been settled, he has reopened his case from 2018. It was closed out by SIG, and he's reopened it in an attempt to have a settlement, because he's still dealing with the medical problems that arise from being a gunshot victim. So law enforcement bans across the country have been happening so far. Washington State has completely banned the 320 from their training academy, like we have ILEA. Washington's banned it, Oregon followed suit, the beginning of this month has banned it as well. There have been, Oklahoma has banned it, and there are multiple different training agencies that they run. Beyond them, Milwaukee has banned the 320 just within the Milwaukee Police Department. Dallas has switched from their 320s back to Glock, and most agencies in Texas so far have switched to Glock, if they were carrying those before, or whatever they had before they made the switch to the 320. Texas was the first to jump on the 320 when it came out, and also the first to switch back when they realized they had a problem. That being with the vast size of their departments, they had to be quick about their switch. As I said, with agencies banning it, there's at least seven states, including the ones that I've already named, but also including Alabama, Connecticut, Florida, Texas, and others that have pulled the 320, whether it's a smaller department like ours, or a larger one, like I said, with Milwaukee. There, nobody wants to take that risk, including some of the officers that I work with on night shift, as I've been working on this for the last week several hours at night, explaining to the guys that I work with what we're finding, some of them don't even want to take them home, and I don't blame them. One concern that Chief Weir has, that I'm sure SROs will have, when they learn about the extent of this issue as being in the schools, Chief Weir's concerned with being in his daycare. I have small children at home, my daughter is hip height. My son, two years old, loves to climb all over me when I get home, is a concern that I've always had. It was at the back of my mind until I really started digging into it and realized how much of an issue it is. And it's definitely, we have guys that don't wanna take them aside, that don't want their kids around them, don't wanna be around kids just for that fear of it happening. So, the reports are still ongoing. There was just a video release that brought up, Chief Weir's attention to it was Connecticut, I believe, that one was at, was SRO?
That one was three years ago. None of the one last week was SRO in series California.
California, okay. So she was an SRO, she was leaving summer school for the day, her shift was over. As she was going to get into her patrol car, she opened her door, she had a backpack on, and her holster was on her right hip. As she lowered the backpack down, the weight of the backpack in her arm met the backplate of the weapon, it discharged and traveled into her thigh. That's all it takes. I know me just saying that is one thing, so I believe Chief Weir sent out a report from the FBI, their ballistic research facility. They work with, the FBI works with the DEA, and they do all sorts of ballistic testing, whether it's ammunition, body armor, and actually weapons, both to be used by federal agencies, by law enforcement, and then they withhold the standard for what we need. The reason for the evaluation by the Michigan State Police, this report was done August 30th of last year, the reason being was a Michigan State trooper had a uncommanded discharge on July 31st of last year. In April of last year, the Michigan State Police switched from the current Glock pistol that they had to the Sig Sauer M18, which is what we have. There's minor changes between each model to give a different acronym for the name, it's still a 320 internal, everything's the same. They fired 1,200 rounds for a transition course, this officer himself fired another 100 rounds on a separate day during training. On July 31st, 2024, while standing in a squad area with other members of the department, his Sig Sauer fired uncommanded. His weapon was secured in a Level 3 holster, which is the same thing that we're issued. It has a series of safeties, so that way it cannot be accessed without going through that series of safeties. Our holsters also prevent anything from getting into the holster or pull the trigger. I myself tested it the other night with an unloaded weapon, obviously. I attempted to force my finger into the trigger guard, pass our trigger, and I ripped my finger open in the process. I was able to do it, but it was extremely uncomfortable, and it peeled the skin back. So we have no concern with that. The holster that he was using is very similar, and the FBI tested that exact test that I did, which is where I got the idea to try it. Reason being is because SIG has said time and time again that it could have been someone's car keys, because undercover officers, a female undercover officer had hers in her purse. It was just sitting on her desk, she wasn't touching it, the bag wasn't moving, it went off. So SIG claimed that, well, something got in the trigger guard, even though it was in the holster. FBI did that test to prove that that may not be the case. So, August 2nd, 2024, the BRF was conducted to perform an evaluation on the officer's pistol. So they, when this happened, the state troopers that were in the room removed the holster and the weapon, didn't touch it at all, they just pulled it off, a quick release holster, like similar to what we carry, sent the entire thing to the FBI to be tested and evaluated. It still had the fire casing in there and a full mag, nothing was changed. The FBI received that pistol, as well as an unfired, unissued pistol from the Michigan State Police. The report is 32 pages long. If you wanna read it, if you have questions, feel free to reach out to me, I've read it twice.
I sent it.
Yeah. Feel free to reach out to me, I'll gladly explain everything. The report I have tonight is a very condensed version of that 32 pages, so I'm not gonna sit here and take up all night. So, as I said, the M18 series that the Michigan State Police carries is the exact same model as we carry, with just minor issues, the internals are the same. One main thing that stood out while doing research, the Sig Sauer P320 that Chief Weir is carrying, compared to the Glock that I have tucked to my waistband, which I carry on and off duty, or, sorry, off duty, and if I'm working different details, I'll carry this. The reason I carry is because Glock, when they had issues initially, was negligence. Glock has not had an issue since, as far as internals and uncommanded discharges. The Glock striker, how the weapon fires, the trigger pull is what actually pulls the striker to the rear, and when you hit the firing point, it releases, the sear releases, and that striker goes forward, that's what causes the discharge. At no point is that striker charged until your trigger is pulled. With a Sig Sauer P320 and the M18, it is actually half cocked at all times. The FBI found out that there is sufficient energy in the striker spring with the striker pin hook that's captured in the knock for the weapon to fire without rearward travel. So just in the state it's in now, it has enough force in the striker to be able to go off without a trigger pull. And that was towards the beginning of the report. FBI already knew that. So based on the weapon's design, an uncommanded firing can be achieved by two things, a complete loss of sear engagement, both primary and secondary, and a failure of the striker safety lock. So those two instances have to happen for an uncommanded discharge, and it's happened over 100 times across the country with 80 people being injured in the process. That seems pretty substantial to me, and the amount of firearms I, knowledge I have, it's an issue that shouldn't be an issue. As Dwayne understands, he's laughing right now, he understands, it's a major issue, but SIG refuses to acknowledge it because of obvious reasons financially. So additionally, during dry fire manipulation, it is observed that the trigger could be partially pressed to the rear, and the slide manipulated by hand causing the striker to fall completely. What they mean by that is you get a half a trigger pull, you move the slide roughly an eighth of an inch, and the striker will go. I tested this on an unloaded weapon, and it happens. An eighth of an inch is not very much at all. The weapon, when it goes off, that firing pin goes forward, the breech is still against the slide, so there's not any room at all for that firing pin to miss that primer. With, the FBI did it with a primed case, which was more telling that every time they did it, and they tested multiple times, that the safety lock was disabled based on a partial trigger press. The voluntary upgrade that I said before started in 2017, they took away the potential risk of discharge from being dropped. Some of the changes they had made during that were a lightened trigger, and then adjustments made to the striker, sorry, the sears within the internals, and then a mechanical disconnect, which are all supposed to assist with the drop. So, yeah, like I said, I'm keeping this short, so I have a conclusion bit built in here, this will be the longest aspect of it, but just to give you guys an idea of what the FBI's conclusion was at the end of their report. So according to Sig Sauer, five independent actions must occur before the P320 will discharge. Those actions are, the first... Those actions are, the first being the trigger is pressed to the rear, moving the trigger bar forward. The second is the captive safety lever will rotate upward while the striker safety lock rotates upward as well. The fourth step after those is the sear will rotate downward, releasing the striker pin, which is the final step to happen. That is all happening without a trigger pull with the .320. That's what we're experiencing with just pressure. A reliable test could not be developed at the time of this document to test the effectiveness, excuse me, of the secondary sear notch. However, testing did indicate with movements representing those common to a law enforcement officer, it is possible to render the striker safety lock inoperable and ineffective at preventing the striker from impacting a chambered round if complete sear engagement is lost. The FBI did over 50 tests, testing the sears and the internals, over 50, and it failed 15 times. They brought in the unfired, unissued .320, and it failed nine times. They stopped the test after the 10th, because they were seeing the exact same problem, they didn't need to go beyond the 10 count. It is important to be known that the striker safety lock by design is the last safety line to prevent an unintended discharge, or uncommanded discharge, that is, is in place to protect against a secondary sear notch override, meaning that even the striker safety lock by design is failing. It's not supposed to, right? That's the last line of defense for this, to have an uncommanded discharge, and that itself is failing from Sig's design. While examination of the subject weapon, the officer's weapon, did not independently provide evidence of an uncommanded discharge, it does indicate that it may be possible if sear engagement is lost. The disabling of the striker safety lock through movement and friction creates a condition which merits further exploration to fully assess potential risk. The FBI recommends that MSP weigh the content of this report with the outcome of the internal investigation in making its final determination related to the Sig Sauer M-18 as issued, as an issued firearm within the department. So reading through it, understanding the effect that the FBI had with this test, 15 out of 50, to me is a lot when it comes to a weapon going off unattended, on a used weapon with 1,300 rounds. I can tell you right now, as I'm standing here, the years that we've had these, I've put probably three times that through my weapon. I have a .320 at home, a personal weapon that my dad gave me when I graduated ILEA as a gift, that sits unloaded at my nightstand, it's my home defense gun. I don't carry it at all, knowing this. I completely carry Glock unless I'm working. That's the only time I'll have the Sig, and even then, now it's in the back of not just my mind, Chief's mind, and a number of the officers that we work with, it is obvious safety concern. That's all I have, I'll turn it back over to Chief Weir. Again, if you guys have any questions, please feel free to reach out, I'll explain more.
The reason I had him come is to kind of give you a quick education on what's going on with these, and I am requesting to move forward to look at a different gun, probably more so the Glock, because they're readily available. The Glock's been proven since the 80s, departments have had them, and never, uncommanded discharge or uncommanded discharge. I'm just, I found this out three years ago, a kinetic officer, they were wrestling with a guy, he'd been over to handcuff them in their lobby of their police department, three years ago, I watched the video, and his gun, in the video, you see it firing, nobody's around his holster, it just fired. So I questioned it three years ago with the old admin, and I was told it's not our issue, so, nothing moved on, but I kind of forgot about it, because I hadn't heard anything until I saw that SRO officer last week, I saw that video, and I was like...
Is that one right there? July 24th?
Yeah, July 24th of '23, is when that happened in Connecticut. And they bought their guns the same time we got ours. That's why I was trying to convince them back then, but either way, when I saw that SRO officer, I was like, yeah, if we had that happen in our schools, or in my daycare...
Oh, yeah. If I may, I know absolutely nothing about guns, which is probably a good thing. Ammo, does it?
No issues with the ammo.
I mean, would you be able to use the same ammo?
Yes, same ammo, our sights, we can take off, our flashlights, we can take off. The guns, I've been getting ideas on pricing, they'd be under $500 per gun, which these were, I believe, almost 1,200, and...
No, they were 700. The last two you bought were 700 dollars.
But the sights and the flashlights were paid separately, because they came in two different...
250 for the flashlights?
And then, yeah, it was, right, and then sight, it was 1,100 for a package deal. We're going to keep the sights and flashlight, and can utilize them on whatever gun we use for this.
Well, what disturbs me, you said 15 out of 50 failed?
Yes, sir.
That's 30%.
Yeah.
You extrapolate that out to parts per million, that's 300. You have an opportunity for 300,000 uncommanded firearms, or whatever, whatever terminology you use. That's not, no.
How many are yours?
25, right.
I don't know.
Do you have 25 of the...
We have 27 on our press, so we have two spares for...
So what's the math there, John?
But it only takes one child per...
And then what do you do about it? Can you trade it in?
That's, yeah, the cost of the, any of the Glocks would be under, just under $500. We'd have to get new holster, which would approximately be around $80, and then trade in, they said, what these are between $200 and $300, depending on condition. So that would knock down, we'd be well under $500 per new gun.
Would it be feasible to go with all new versus taking sight off of a previous used gun?
That's what I was going to recommend. I hadn't, I hadn't had time to bring it up to him yet.
With the responsibility, John, with what you have, when you start taking something off of the old gun on the new gun, it's not advisable, in my opinion, and I don't know, if that's what you want to find, I would bid out the entire thing. Only, now, the flashlight's not that big a deal, if you got the same gun.
So what Chief Weir is referring to with the sights is the optic, since we've gone to red dots, yeah. Yeah, yeah, the red dot optic is mounted to the top of the weapons.
Yeah, not the big sights.
Yeah, those can transfer from one to the next. The flashlight's, it's just a plate that fits on the top of the flashlight to mount to the weapon itself. We can swap those out, and then we can transfer one to the next.
One thing to do to liability issues alone, is we need to do that.
I just want to say that the current ones that they're carrying now were purchased in 2023 at a price of $324 per gun.
That's what we pay for the, with our trade-ins?
Yes.
Right. Because our old guns get traded in, which knock down the price. And that's what, this would happen with purchasing the new guns.
I just take it to liability, you know?
Yeah, I, so at this point, I'd say you're looking for, well, if they just proceed and getting, and getting the details worked out on exact cost and stuff like that, and I believe you'll have support from this council. I would do that, I mean, that would be my...
Make a motion to let him look into it.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
How soon can we have the numbers back?
I'm hoping, well, I'm going to be gone the rest of the week, so I'm hoping I can get it tomorrow, maybe Wednesday, depends if they call back.
Before the next meeting.
Before the next meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The motion was to get quotes for the request.
Yes. And the trade-in, all the whole, all the particulars, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and options with or without the light, right?
Go into me, go into me.
I would get, I would try to get all that information, and so, okay, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Very good. Good work, Zach. Where are we at? Superintendent Marquess.
Thank you, I just have a few things of information. Number one, good news is, on July 11th, the Clerk's Office received a payback from the state on the electric vehicles we purchased.
I hadn't heard that, okay.
So we got that done finally, we are working on getting the charger set up in the park, and I got a PO going today for that, so we'll get that finished, and hopefully we get that money back out this year. Second thing is, EB paving is tentatively, or allegedly, going to start paving this week, or start working, not paving, but start concrete work this week. So they're supposed to be moving to town this week, they told me last week, locations came in, so hopefully that goes. And then another one, other one bad part of news is, out on Oak Drive, at Walmart, and Marshall's there, that stoplight is on flash.
Yeah.
It's been on flash, kind of on and off since June 24th, when that...
That storm.
That storm came through, and one went out at the state and burnt their box. When I got called in by 11:30 that night, I opened our box to see if I could get back to running, and our box, I opened it up, and it smelled really bad, it burnt. And so then I just talked to my gentleman at Michigan I deal with, and they have been looking into it, working on parts, trying to get it, talked to them this weekend a little, and believe we're probably going to have to replace the whole cabinet, because things burnt, so it's still on flash, I know people are starting to get a little aggravated with that, but that could come up to maybe low 20s. So we are going to start looking into possibilities as part of an insurance claim too, I don't know, so we're just going to look into more of this, but it's going to be a good cost, and still going to be just a little bit of time, but, I think the floor has put some stuff out on social media about us, because well, maybe they'd call her today, so, we'll be working on that, but, it's kind of a mess.
We've got Kathy Butter, I'm listening in, I don't know if somebody else from the pilots on there or not, but they'll pick up on that.
So, hopefully we get something going on it, but every time we get into these traffic light boxes, it gets expensive, and getting stuff around, and which is time, and I'm sure the state had quite a few in stock, and I know they were working that night to redo their whole box, because something was burnt bad.
It was a mess that night.
It was.
You guys did a great job of... So 30, light was out, black, and it was dark, I was out there, and it was a rough, how many, I think they had three accidents, and luckily, only one was transported to the hospital, I think, anyway.
Okay, so, that's kind of where we are on that, if you guys noticed that or get complaints, just so you're aware. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jim. Mike Collins?
Just like to ask your permission to do a burn of our brush pile again, just like in the past, we'll contact the county and get with Chief Holm, and let them know when we're going to do it, maybe next month or so.
Take a motion to approve the request.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, very good, thanks, Mike. Mr. Height?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
And Bill Shealy, I don't believe is here, he's busy shuffling planes between hangars right now, he told me, so he couldn't be here this evening. Okay.
Okay, if you remember, three months ago or so, I let you know that the, well, actually, I think it was the council, but most of you will probably still remember, the current city IT contract with PC Source goes through August 1st of this year, and I had notified them not to automatically renew it, and in the meantime, we had a committee come together to review options, and consider what we would do going forward for the city for IT services. After that review and looking at different options, that committee is recommending that we contract with Hyperwave Consulting for IT services for the city. I think part of the reasoning is because Hyperwave has assisted with our transition to Microsoft 365, they are currently in the process of transitioning our phone service, and they've worked with some departments for many years. They're actually here tonight, I don't know if it's for this consideration, or just to make sure that our new computer is working for live streaming, but either way, we appreciate them being here. So what you have tonight is a proposed agreement for IT services for the city. One thing I would note is that this is not a three-year contract like the last one, this is a one-year contract, so that will give us an opportunity to evaluate the transition and hold them accountable, so that next year at this time, we'll consider how well they're doing. But we would ask you to approve the city contracting with Hyperwave Consulting for IT services under this contract.
A question, is this a monthly payment? I mean, I realize the total cost is annual, but do we pay the, pay it monthly?
Yes, and it is based on, partially based on the number of users, so it will, it may fluctuate. If we add additional computers or remove computers, then it will go up and down based on that.
So 4562 is the monthly number, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I just wanted to be clear, that we all understand that. That's per month, Dave.
Oh, and you get a cost per computer, is that right?
Yes.
All right.
And it is, it's not just computers, it also covers servers and security on them, so there are a couple of components to it.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
All right, we have a motion in a second, any further questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Very good, thank you.
We have one request this evening, it is to request to install a fire pit on the city property located 201 Water Street, or the Water Street Townhomes. Kevin, you'll come up and answer questions, please.
If I could add just one comment on this, so Kevin contacted me to ask if this is something that would be allowed, and based on the city ordinance, a fire pit like this would be permitted on private property. However, because of the way this is set up, the parking lot is property of the City Redevelopment Commission. So, the reason for the request is because it is city-owned property, it would be on city-owned property, not on the private property. So that's really what the request is, not so much permission for a fire pit, which would be permitted under city ordinance, but permission to put that fire pit on city-owned property.
Anything that would happen is the city responsibility, liability, what's that, what would be like?
So, I mean, if something happens, everybody gets sued, but ultimately, there would have to be city insurance coverage. There could be an indemnification agreement between the apartment complex and the city, probably with the redevelopment commission, since that's who actually owns the property, but we could put together an indemnification agreement for that. This has just been popular at some of the other apartments we've done, I'm doing it with a cutoff piece of CMP, so it's pretty much bulletproof, and it's going to be pretty small, it's on one of the islands, so there's concrete paving all the way around it, shouldn't go anywhere.
Just curious, how many feet to the nearest property building?
Eight to 10 feet.
That's not enough. I mean, NFPA code, there's not a code, but there's a recommendation from NFPA that says it should be at least 25 feet. Steve?
I don't have that memorized.
I, you know, if you trust Google, that's where I got that this morning, so, so it's not a, it's not a code per law, it's a recommendation. I mean, you have indemnification agreements, but that only goes so far, from my experience. Being on city property, I would, I would recommend we not approve it.
I know that, but I'm gonna second that, I'm just scared of the liability process. I mean, I think it's me, but.
Is it gas or wood?
A gas one would be better, is it?
I'm just asking, is it, were you thinking of being wood, just burning wood?
It would just be for burning wood, we, we don't even have any gas on the property. Everything's electric in the apartments. And it's, yeah, twenty-four inch diameter, so you're not gonna have a very big fire in there anyway, you can't, with the, with the size of it, so.
I just pay the money. Do we have a motion, we have a motion, or we have recommendations, so that is the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? I'd just say, I don't, I don't know, Dave, I don't see the issue with this, I know other communities do it, Freeman does it.
On city property?
Yeah. What's that?
Freeman's gas.
I think it'd be added amenity myself, I really do.
Freeman's gas.
Freeman's gas, yeah.
Unless you want to table this and see if we want to go to them, see what they think, first for their.
Theirs is propane, I believe.
What, can I say something?
Sure, you're our insurance advisor. Art Jacobs.
Art Jacobs, do you have my address? Thirteen two six eight, no Meg Trail, Plymouth, Indiana. You have them in the park. When you look at liability, you do have them in the park also, you have fireplaces and things too. I'll just bring that up.
That's our insurance guy, so.
If I didn't say I approved it, I would just give you some information.
Anyway, okay, so that's my only thought, so let's have a vote, so. Unless you get further discussion.
Does that change anybody's thoughts on that, if we're doing it in the park? I mean, I don't wanna be a naysayer on it, but I'm just more worried about liability and what it's gonna get us, if something happens. So it's on our block, we'll look into it.
You want to table?
I'd like to table it, but that's, you got a problem.
Well, we have a motion, and he'd have to withdraw it, that'd be the, if you wanna table, if you.
If, if you wanna look into it, I will withdraw the motion.
Okay, we're gonna table it. Motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Very good, we're gonna think about it.
No problem.
Thanks, Kevin.
Yep.
Moving along, number eight, motion to, yeah, to approve our claims from our packets?
Make a motion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Good. Number nine, acceptance of communications.
Will we accept the communication?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Very good, motion carries. And number ten?
Motion to adjourn.
Done, motion is, we've got a second. Very good. We'll just take about two or three minutes, and then we'll get started in the council meeting.
It does.
Okay, let's call an order of the July 14, 2025 Common Council Meeting. Councilman Eckert?
No.
Start. Okay, Linda, please lead us in prayer.
Who would you pray with me, please? Our most gracious and loving God, we come to you this evening with many things on our hearts and minds. We just send so much love and support to the families and the communities that are suffering from the loss of so many, many young lives. We pray for those recovered and those who are to be recovered yet, and we pray for those who find them because we know that their hearts are just breaking. We ask that you be with all of our first responders and give them guidance and protection when they are called out, and don't think a second thing about answering a call. We appreciate so much the ones that do serve our community. We ask that you be with us tonight as we gather and discuss the business of the city. We ask that you be with all who will talk and all who will listen. Be with us so that our wisdom and discernment can be conveyed to everyone, and let us regard each other with respect and love. We lift these things, and all who are here, in your holy name, we ask these things. Amen.
Please join me in the pleasurable leashes.
Pleas of the leashes to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Councilman Call?
Here.
Eckert?
Here.
Grabwall?
Here.
Longenhacker?
Here.
Milder?
Here.
Mara?
Here.
Start?
Here.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting and from our common council meeting on June 30th, special session.
Same thing.
Very good. Have a motion.
All second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have some additional appropriations that we need to open a public hearing for. If somebody would like to make that.
Make a motion to open up public hearings with additional appropriations. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We are in public hearing mode.
Our public hearing this evening is for an additional appropriation in the general fund for the fire department capital outlays. This is for 15 radios to be installed in vehicles then reimbursed by the county and the townships. The amount of additional appropriation is $57,625. Any questions?
Any questions from anybody? I'll entertain the motion to close the public hearing then.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very good. Anything from the board this evening?
Just one short thing.
One short thing. You already said that, right? One short thing.
I already told them that. So, in our package, and I just thought I'd point this out to everyone, that our fire EMS report that we received, 82% of our calls are EMS calls. There were 195 of them in June alone. The last time we had that was, well, last month was 194, but then January was 196. So, just wanted to point that out, and then there were 17 dispatch calls that were canceled in a route. So, I wanted to make that a point why I still believe that our fire EMS building and support is needed. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Randy. All right, anything from anybody else? Okay.
Okay, we have a couple of ordinances for second, third reading. Ordinance number 2025-2242, an ordinance regarding cemetery fees for the city of Plymouth. I think this one is pretty easy to understand. We have the new Cherrywood addition open now, and also just a couple of minor updates to the existing ordinance. So, that is before you for second and third reading.
I'll make a motion to pass 2025-2242 on second reading.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I could've done a roll call, but I felt good about that. You okay with that, Lynn?
We'll make a roll call.
Okay.
You all said aye. You were rolling.
I get in trouble sometimes from our clerk treasurer when I-
You can make that for a third reading.
We're gonna do that, actually.
I'd make a motion to pass ordinance 2025-2242 on third reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Call?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
Grabwall?
Yes.
Longenhacker?
Yes.
Milder?
Yes.
Mara?
Yes.
Start?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. I'm just trying to think, keep things moving, right? So, go ahead, Jeff.
Well, next is ordinance number 2025-2243, an ordinance to amend stormwater management regulations for the city of Plymouth. So, this process has been going on for, I think, a couple of years, and Dan Sellers took over when he became city engineer, and he has been working with Lockmueller. I'm sure you have all read this proposed ordinance thoroughly and have some very insightful questions, so representatives of Lockmueller are here tonight to answer those questions, or you can simply do what I do, and that is trust Dan Sellers as the expert that all of this is appropriate. So, I don't know.
Huck, would you like to say anything, or anybody?
I just wanted to thank Dan and Chris for their time and working through it with us, and hope everyone's happy with keeping things as close to as they are as we can and helping the town meet all their requirements moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you. Okay.
Make a motion to pass 2025-2243 on second reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Councilman Call?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
Grabwall?
Yes.
Longenhacker?
Yes.
Milder?
Yes.
Mara?
Yes.
Start?
Yes.
That was all yeses, and I felt good about that one, too, but-
Make a motion to pass 2025-2243 on third reading.
Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Call?
Yes, again.
Eckert?
Yes.
Grabwall?
Yes.
Longenhacker?
Yes.
Milder?
Yes.
Mara?
Yes.
Start?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
I'm gonna give Lynn a turn now.
Okay, you have received two donations, or the city has received two donations. The first in the amount of $1,000 from First Source Bank to be used for the mayor's summer of music. The second donation, the amount of $650 from Gen X Solar to be used for the fire department grant that they applied for, which I just received this information this evening, to purchase iPads that are web-based for recording programs in warning rigs checks and communication with other staff members. I'm asking if you wish to accept these donations with the restricted terms and conditions and purposes attached to the donations. If so, they will be received into the monetary given.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very good. Felt really good about that one.
Okay, we have some more ordinances for first reading. Ordinance number 2025-2244, fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees, fire and police personnel of the city of Plymouth, Indiana for the year 2026. This is on first reading, so I don't think anything needs to be said or done with this one right now. However, ordinance number 2025-2245, an ordinance regarding appointments to the park and recreation board, and ordinance number 2025-2246, an ordinance regarding appointments to the board of aviation commissioners. So, both of those are updates to the current city ordinances. Because of a new statute this year, Kyle has been doing a lot of work to make sure that we have all the appropriate information and that it is correct on the city's website for various board members and their terms and the appointing authorities. In the course of that, we discovered a couple of discrepancies between current state law and our city ordinances, both for the park and recreation board and the board of aviation commissioners. These ordinances are just to amend the city ordinance to bring it in line with the current state statute regarding those boards. Because both of those boards are currently technically out of compliance, and we are amending this to reflect the current makeup of those boards, I would ask that the council suspend the rules and pass both of these ordinances on all three readings tonight so that we can tell those board members they can stay in their seat and remain on the boards.
So first, I'll have to make a motion to suspend-
Right, so first, and you'll have to do each one of these separate, so first, you would make a motion to suspend the rules and allow for hearing of ordinance number 2025-2245 on all three readings.
And to suspend, we gotta be unanimous.
Correct.
I would make that motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
2245 first.
For 2244.
45.
45, I'm sorry, yes. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Call?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
Grabwall?
Yes.
Longenhacker?
Yes.
Milder?
Yes.
Mara?
Yes.
Start?
Yes.
Now the motion can be made to pass in all three readings, correct? Is that how we'd be stating it?
Well, you would, just like the ordinances, we've already had first reading, you would make a motion for passage on second reading, followed by a motion to pass on third reading.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2025-2245 on second reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Call?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
Grabwall?
Yes.
Longenhacker?
Yes.
Milder?
Yes.
Mara?
Yes.
Start?
Yes.
Is that a motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Call?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
Grabwall?
Yes.
Longenhacker?
Yes.
Milder?
Yes.
Mara?
Yes.
Start?
Yes.
Randy, you're on a roll then.
I'd make the motion to suspend the rules for 2025-2246.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilman?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
Grabwall?
Yes.
Longenhacker?
Yes.
Milder?
Yes.
Mara?
Yes.
Start?
Yes.
Randy, you're on a roll then.
I'd make the motion to suspend the rules for 2025-2246.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Call?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
Grabwall?
Yes.
Longenhacker?
Yes.
Milder?
Yes.
Mara?
Yes.
Start?
Yes.
Okay, we got through that. A couple of resolutions, now, resolution number 2025-1162, the additional appropriations resolution that clerk treasurer explained during the public hearing.
Motion to approve a resolution 2025-1162.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Pick a name.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, go ahead.
Councilman Call?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
Grabwall?
Yes.
Longenhacker?
Yes.
Milder?
Yes.
Mara?
Yes.
Start?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is resolution number 2025-1163, resolution of the city of Plymouth to purchase real property. So, this is regarding the house at 222 Shally Drive that has been vacant since the flood of 2018. Tried to explain it pretty well in the text of the resolution. We have had some discussions with the property owner. There's an interest in selling the property to the city, and we believe, the administration believes it would be good for the city to acquire it and demolish it and basically expand the park in that area because it's really not feasible to repair that house or to build anything else there. For that to happen, the first step in the process is for you as the fiscal body to pass a resolution expressing your interest in purchasing the property, and then we have to get two appraisals, which I will tell you, we've already gotten the two appraisals. So, the next step will be to prepare a purchase agreement and finalize all the details with the owner so that we can then go to the board of public works and safety to approve the actual purchase. I don't want to disclose any numbers in a public meeting until we've finalized an agreement, but I can tell you that the purchase price would be well within what is budgeted for land acquisition for the city.
Is this gonna be during a green space, or?
Yeah, that's really the only feasible use for the property. Because of the flood zone, it was determined that it just cannot be repaired or rebuilt.
My next question was, have we figured out what the additional maintenance cost will be for the apartment?
We have not calculated that. It would really just be, once it's completely demoed, it would just be a matter of mowing in a little additional area. We've not calculated the amount of that.
So, there's gonna be an element to that, just wanted to be aware.
Right.
Because White gets a lot of property handed to him, but I don't know that we take that into consideration. Would you get that money considered?
Yeah, we can certainly include more information. Like I said, this is just the first step in the process. There's a lot more details to be worked out, but we can definitely take that into consideration.
Any idea when the next FEMA grant might be available?
No, but for the amount of money we're talking here, it really wouldn't, it wouldn't meet the FEMA guidelines. It's just such a small purchase price that it's really negligible for them. It actually, this property was included in a previous FEMA grant for a significantly larger purchase price, and there was no agreement reached with the property owners, so unfortunately they missed out on that opportunity.
To your side.
Yes, looking for approval of the resolution number 2025-1163.
I'll make a motion, go ahead. I'm sorry to make a resolution to approve the resolution number 2025-1163.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, go ahead, roll call vote, tell them they're clerk treasurer.
Councilman Call? Eckert?
Yes.
Grabwall?
Yes.
Longenhacker?
Yes.
Milder?
Yes.
Mara?
Yes.
Start?
Yes.
Okay.
All ahead.
All right, that brings up other business, and you want me, are you gonna introduce, is Lynn introducing this?
I was prepared to, it was submitted as a request, so.
So, invite Randy Danielson up to, and Donna Pontius.
You have a quick request this evening for a presentation by the Reese Theater on success in future projects and requesting monetary support. Randy Danielson and Linda-
No, Donna.
Donna, sorry. Donna Pontius are here to speak on behalf of Reese.
But if Linda wants to come up, that's fine.
So, to advance this with this mouse, just click once?
I think so.
You think so? Okay.
That's the only question for Jeff, me using the mouse.
We usually use the keyboard.
You didn't want the keyboard.
Well, you should be able to just click the mouse if it's on.
Are you using the keyboard?
It's technology, Jeff, just, you know, I don't know.
The, it is one mouse that covers both screens, so if you have a touchscreen to control the reading, you'll have to move it up to the left screen.
It is on that screen.
It is on that screen. Okay.
I'll sit here with you, so it'll just be the keyboard. Okay.
We're back.
Maybe first.
We're back.
State your name, your address.
Oh, that's right, Donna Pontius, 8801 Union Road, Plymouth.
All right, Randy Danielson, 12638 Emerald Court, Plymouth. Good evening. Thank you and allow you, for allowing us to be here this evening. You know, eight years ago, when we appeared here before the common council with some of you present, so congratulations, we were all embarking on a journey of the unknowns. Just what would we uncover beneath and within the stately walls of a beloved theater with bones that dated back to the Civil War? Well, there were many, including a sinking foundation, a collapsed ceiling, and an unsupported auditorium floor.
And tonight, we return with confidence of knowing that every unknown was discovered and a solution found and corrected through the generosity of many, including in-kind services of numerous local companies. Over this past six-year period with four phases of construction and never-ending funding, fundraising, I'm sorry, the Reese was restored to an even greater splendor than its grand opening in 1940.
A community's tapestry evolves. The retail tapestry of a community is always evolving, but what has transpired on lot number one of the original 1836 Plymouth plat map is truly remarkable. From the early days of our city to the present, names like Lowers, of course, Bosworths, and People's Drug Store have come and gone. But for 85 years, the one constant thread to this community has been the Reese Theater. In 1987, however, the Reese Theater, as you can see, had a midlife crisis. Many of us experienced that. But a community came together even then to save that for future generations, and then the facade was fully restored in 1997. And that was done by Kevin Berger, who was here earlier. So, the historical significance of the Reese is as important today as it was in the past.
Our mission is to provide a conduit for the support and promotion of artistic, educational, and cultural events in the region, as well as offer a venue to celebrate life and community milestones. Our six pillars of service that enhance everyone's quality of life include cinema, dance, events, theater, and education, and music. Was that six?
You got them.
Was it seven?
There were six.
Okay.
Just out of luck.
And how that translates to the experience of those visiting the Reese, we would like to invite our board president, Pat Popa, and current managing director, Brian Teal, forward to give some insight on that. There they are.
It's precarious.
Hi, guys.
Ryan, you wanna be over here?
I'm Pat Popa. Address is 12323 Chipotle Boulevard.
Brian Teal, 5018 West Shore Drive in Bremen. Good, I didn't hear any boos.
The next slide.
There we go. All right. So, legacy of impact, so rejuvenated facility, affordable access to the arts, community gathering space, and increased tourism. Randy kinda stole my thing I was gonna say, but that's okay. So, lot one has a big significant deal here in Plymouth. It holds lot one. And because of the Danielsons, along with the founding board and a whole host of funding partners, the Reese is not a parking lot right now. It's now a multi-purpose facility serving our community by providing affordable access to the arts through different community events, which has also been drawing people in from outsider community. I feel what Pat's gonna talk about next is really gonna resonate with each of you guys.
So, economic and community impact. I'm a 33-year resident of Marshall County, 30 years part-time and a little over two and a half full-time. When I became a full-time resident, I fell in love with the Reese. And just recently, the torch has been passed to me by Randy, and I now proudly serve as the president, helping to guide the vision for its continued growth. It's a magical place, a sparkling space that brings people together for film, arts, music, and shared experiences. But years ago, I was involved in efforts to save the town theater in Highland, same vintage as the Reese. It was built in 1940, and the community fought really hard to save it. We got memberships, we had fundraisers, we had signs all over town, people wore t-shirts. The theater's even featured on our Highland South Shore poster. But despite the passion, the leadership didn't have a long-term plan, and the building was torn down. Today, it's just a vacant lot and a missed opportunity. And I've experienced the economic impact that the Reese brings because when we're there, we have dozens of people that have come from the brass rail, but they've just had dinner, or Opies, they just have had dinner and come to the Reese, or the new Yellow River town. So, I've experienced at full hand what the impact has brought to this community. So, touching the lives of youth and seniors, these are just some of the events that we've had this year, or the last years. Just recently, we've resurrected the Missoula Children's Theater. So, 27 children were in a camp all week for a very reasonable price of $150 per child, and during that week, they learned how to put on a play. Friday night and Saturday afternoon matinee, we had 260 patrons that came to watch, parents, grandparents, neighbors, friends. It was quite an unbelievable show, so successful that they were, most of the parents were asking, are we gonna do it again next year? And one family even offered to host the Missoula people next year, you know, if we can bring them back to Plymouth. The Southland Symphony comes every year, and that is a free event for the community, a very classy, well-attended event called TM Symphony. And then we also have our season citizens movies, which is an affordable afternoon of entertainment for seniors 55 and over. For $8, you get a popcorn, a soda, and a movie. So, we have such classics as Breakfast at Tiffany's, The Sting, and Fairway and Park.
Sorry. Since I joined the Reese in October last year, the board and I have worked tirelessly to focus in on our programming so that multiple facets of our community can experience the magic of the Reese and the arts. We've conducted and plan to continue our co-fundraising events that help other area nonprofits as well as the theater. For example, the Marshall County Church Orchestra, the Purdue Romnai Club of Marshall County, where we had the Purdue Varsity Club. If you missed that event, you guys missed a heck of a show. And just recently, this weekend, we had a Puma Volunteer Fire Department co-fundraising event where we had a famous comedian, David Dyer, who was actually on The Bob and Tom Show on one day, which is nationally syndicated radio station, or radio show, if you've been on The Bob and Tom Show, I think, somebody in the head, you do know. I heard the Reese mentioned multiple times in Plymouth, Indiana, so that was amazing to hear that. You know, we've had 235 performances in movies. Pat listed some of the movies as a recent, you know, again, the Purdue Varsity Club, we hosted, we just had the governor, or we, no. What's that?
Okra.
Okra, recently. We had just a number, variety of different nonprofits, 38 since we've opened three years ago, almost three years ago, 82 private events, Zentis has frequented the facility, ITAMCO. We have averaged 75 hours of volunteer hours every month, so that's a lot. And we've received many, many five-star reviews online, and I think Pat's gonna share some of those with you now.
One, next slide.
Sorry.
So, just in case you can't see- So just in case you can't see that screen, these are two of our wonderful reviews. The first one says, "One word: beautiful." "Once you see a movie, play, or concert here, you'll want to come back again and again. I'm so glad this jewel of Marshall County was saved." Orion L. "This place is beautiful, very tastefully restored. The whole building is awesome. Modern amenities worked into wonderful restoration. And they have great musicians, dueling pianos, bands, comedy acts. Check it out. You won't be disappointed." These are just a few of the wonderful reviews that we see online and hear on a pretty much daily basis.
Yeah, and just one thing I did miss when I was talking was about the Purdue Varsity Glee Club. One of the things we would like to work towards is broadcasting our events to people that are shut in at the nursing home. And we were able to do that with the Purdue Varsity Glee Club by using an outside source this time, and it was amazing. We had lots of people, and actually, we had a couple nursing homes that stepped up to the plate to help sponsor it, so it was great to see that. And the residents got to enjoy the show. You're looking at the support mechanism here.
You are. Okay, so now underway at the Rees is the third-floor construction of Stewie's and Oples' hideaway, which we're going to probably refer to as simply Stewie's. This will continue throughout the summer, providing an updated admin space and enable live streaming to nursing homes and assisted-living facilities in Marshall County. And like Brian mentioned, the Purdue Glee Club was the very first one that we were able to do that utilizing equipment that was provided by Triton High School. Everybody's working together. And we have a, we had a young man who is now helping us, who was an intern with Triton High School, learning the sound and light port. The additional gathering space will also increase private event revenue at the Rees. Okay, our goal by 2027 is looking to the future for the NAREY Building. That would be the city and the Rees applying for an Indiana Community Development Block Grant to restore and utilize the building for retail and theater support space.
The community's investment, the total investment for the Rees has been $4.2 million. As you can see on the slide, $2,115,000, which includes federal, state, and municipal funding, and two city facade grants of $25,000 each. Private donor support with over $2 million total, $1,485,000 in private donations, and over $600,000 in in-kind services and materials.
So many of you have already seen this completed look of the Laporte Street elevation. That would be another great visual enhancement for our community. The Streetscape Project, this is item number one of our ask. So the estimated cost of the installation is $150,000. Now, two local contractors, James Stone, Stone Excavating, and Jason Hunt, Hunt Concrete, have stepped forward, offering to, for in-kind support to the Rees and the community by covering up to half of that cost in rendered services. It would include a widened sidewalk, tree wells, decorative lighting, and brick inlays with donor inscriptions. The brick inlays would, of course, be provided by the Rees. So we are asking for the city's involvement of up to $75,000. Questions? Daniel?
There's been discussion and questions about the Streetscape Project. How would this impact if something like this were to move forward? And then the Streetscape goes in.
That's kind of what spurred us a year ago to start looking at a downtown Streetscape. They wanted to do this project, and we didn't want them to do anything that might take away from what, you know, we're going to be doing anyway. And this actually is just a part of the bigger picture that we'll hopefully someday get to. So this ties in beautifully with what we have so far had renderings drawn up of. So I imagine someday we're going to be spending quite a bit more on the rest of the downtown, and this would be, that part would be done, basically.
Aren't you putting that down the south side of the building for that reason?
Correct, and there's a natural break to transition at the top of the hill. So there'd be a transition in the concrete that we could just tie right into when the other Streetscape. So we'd be widening. South side only, doesn't come to the front? Correct, and it widens that entire sidewalk by about two feet. And you'll notice that down by our entry doors, service doors there at the bottom of the hill, thankfully, the city of Plymouth poured that concrete that's right outside of those doors. But that's how wide that entire walk would be to accommodate the tree wells and the lighting. And then there would be two, possibly three ribbons of the brick inlays that would mimic what we do have on Michigan Street now. And, you know, those might change, but these are inscripted bricks for the donors that have done so much for the theater. And JPR is doing this work with you? Are you going to use JPR at all for the? Brent has been in contact with them for that transition part, to make sure that the elevation or whatever is where it would need to be. Because we all know that the state requires different approaches for sidewalks. But those were corrected, you know, on our side of the street some years ago, so it should transition very well. And I don't know if either one of those contractors are here this evening, but a great deal of thanks for them. This technically wouldn't be the facade grant that we currently have. Okay. Item two.
Of course, Randy leaves me for the best parts of the big ask. Because, you know, women are so good at asking for money.
And they usually get it, so.
As you can see, the Rees Theater, Inc., is a 501(c)(3) public charity. And we exist to uplift Plymouth and the surrounding communities. Our financial status is, we currently have $390,000 in existing debt, which makes $32,000 in interest payments. It's okay, Dwayne, I cough at that, too. We're here tonight seeking, seeking to achieve an even operating balance while allowing us to concentrate on financial stability through grant sponsorships and memberships.
Funding the Rees is not just an investment in a building, it's a commitment to preserving a cultural cornerstone for generations to come. The Rees has been a beacon for the city of Plymouth for quite some time, and we promote it as best we can at every turn. So that's what we have for you this evening to consider.
If you have any further questions, please direct them to Randy.
So kind. I do want to say, and this is on behalf of Donna and I. Donna and I have worked on a lot of boards and a lot of initiatives through the years. And the crew that worked with us for nine years now, most of them are still intact as, as members of what became the project committee. Many of them are in the room here this evening, and I want to acknowledge the fact of their passion and their care and their continued support. And Al is not here tonight, but my wife Eleanor is.
It's okay, Randy.
Trust me.
You can do it.
They've been through a lot. They've been through a lot. So are there any questions? No. David?
Yeah, would you explain, we have, when we met, would you explain how paying off the debt is going to benefit the operation moving forward, especially in being able to offer more services and create more revenue?
Well, if we, as you saw on your handout that was in your package, with that $32,000 going out, last year, or from July 1st to July 1st, our financial picture was minus $36,000. So it looks pretty rough, which causes us to do a lot of fundraising and continuing to do that. So it ties our hands. It's a ball and chain, as you might imagine. And the Rees truly is a public charity. It's a 501(c)(3), but ours is special. It is a public charity. And it's never going to be a financial moneymaker. But we do want to reach the breakeven, and that's what our business plan, which the author is here, and I'll point him out, but Jack Davis was kind enough to really put a lot of effort into our business plan, which you also received. So the sustainability is there. I know we did not even mention the solar that is on the roof, which is the first solar installation in downtown Plymouth. And that is producing 70% easily of our power to operate that building. And there again, that entire solar array was one single gift of an industrial family here in town. So as we pointed out, the over $600,000 of support throughout the community, just like the Hunts and the Stones, it's been truly humbling. Thank you. Does anybody want to, I guess at this point, we could say, anybody against this project, you might want to step forward. If they're ready for it, step forward.
Jack Davis, 14083 Lawrence Lake Drive, Plymouth. And good evening, and as a board member of the Plymouth Economic Development Corporation, I'm happy to share my own thoughts related to the downtown development that the Rees and others have really benefited, or have really put their hearts and souls into recently. Several years ago, PEDC decided that we were going to emphasize and support the development of downtown. If you remember, 10, 12 years ago, what downtown looked like compared to today, our whole idea was that we needed to support a vibrant downtown because that makes a vibrant community. And I think that, you know, we're never where we want to be, but we're a long ways from where we were 10 years ago. Over the last eight to 10 years, individuals, some of them that are here tonight and others, business owners and organizations, they've added to the focus and the importance of downtown. It can be seen by activity, opportunities, and active storefronts. I recently had a conversation with one of our business owners, who is now moving into a new building, enlarging what they're doing. And he said that the building that they're currently in is already leased. And he's not going to be out for a couple months yet. But he said that would not have been the case nine years ago. He said, "People are, people are looking for places in downtown now to have their businesses." Certainly, some of them are looking and they can't find what they want, but people are looking, and there's people out there looking to bring something into downtown. I share all that because the Rees, the Wild Rose Moon Art and Artists, and the Marshall County Museum, working together, have all been keys to that development. The Rees has played a big and important role, and it continues to be a strong link to the community's success and development by increasing community support and expanding our draw to others outside our community. That was referred to a little bit earlier about the people that come, not just for the Rees, but for the other arts that we've encountered or we've brought and encouraged. And that brings more business to all of our businesses in Plymouth. With that said, gone are the days that a venue like the Rees can be successful by being stagnant. It must be creative. It must be in tune with the wishes of the citizens and its clientele while all still, while still trying to be a leader. This means that taking calculated challenges, and with some being successful and others not as successful, that they have to, they have to take those challenges. They have to try some things. They have to do some things differently. They have to have the ability, and our community has to have the whole area has, encourage their success, because their success brings success for our community. And with that, I encourage you to give strong consideration to the Rees proposals and to continue to make our dreams come true. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Mayor Mark. I missed you all. Well, most of you.
Thank you for this opportunity, Mayor Listamurger. For Treasurer Lindgorski and Common Council, thank you again. I come to you tonight to ask for more funding for a beautiful Rees Theater that, after nearly three years since our Rees grand opening, has been a stunning transformation to our beautiful downtown. In my 16 years as mayor of Plymouth, we saw many positive changes. River Park Square is one example that beautified an ugly eyesore just east of downtown. What we have since brought the Mayor's Summer of Music, which began in 2015, every Friday night now until September 5th, as well as the Farmer's Market, which began just before I became mayor. I would say that in September of 2019, when we brought the Vietnam Wall here, was one of Plymouth's finest weekends. I'm memorializing those who died in that conflict. But beyond River Park Square is the Rees Theater, a dream of a few that wanted to bring back what was started decades ago. With the leadership of Donna Pontius and Randy Danielson and their vast committee, this was accomplished after eight years. October 1st, 2022 was another great day in Plymouth, Indiana. The downtown was surging with block-long, with a block-long dinner table, celebrations, speeches, concerts, and of course, what mayors love, a ribbon cutting. I cannot say enough about that weekend, and more importantly, those that dreamed about this for so many years. This was truly a remarkable few days that we had just three years ago. And what has happened since is also remarkable. With many concerts, comedians, receptions, luncheons, meetings, again, truly remarkable. The Common Council, as well as the Redevelopment Commission, had to do a lot. Had to do with that, and it is truly appreciated by many. I ask the council tonight to again act with your hearts and help the Rees Committee financially that keeps the heart of our wonderful downtown beating. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Would anybody else like to say a few words? Very good. So are we, we do have specific asks.
So, are we, we do have specific asks. We can work on those tonight. We can table it to better put more thoughts into it. It's up to this board to make that call. My personal, I don't get a vote, but we cannot stop. We've got momentum, and I applaud you all for, and Redevelopment, for everything they've done the last few years, and with the Heartland Artists. I feel we cannot stop that momentum. And I do believe there's a financial way to do this ask. I would like to take a little bit of time to dive into that a little bit more with Clerk Treasurer and Jeff. I do support this, so I don't get a vote, but there you go.
I think, Colonel, as a mayor, we have to find a way to help. The Rees Theater is so important to the downtown, and it's part of the core, along with Heartland Artists, Heartland Artists, and Wild Rose Moon is the downtown future. And just, and it's already been mentioned, just the economic vibrancy of the downtown project, which started, is incredible. So, I would hope and encourage this board to support it and find a way to make it happen.
I'll make a motion that we table the request, but with the focus and understanding we're going to move forward to try to find funding. We can't commit at this point, because it just came up, and we got to be careful where we pull the money from if we choose to go this path. So, I would make a motion to table, encourage, or ask the mayor and the administrative team to work with Clerk Treasurer to find a way.
Well, we have a motion in a second, and now further discussion?
First off, every single one of you that's involved in this have done a fantastic job in what you're doing. I think it is overwhelming for what you guys have brought to the city of Plymouth, along with the Arts Gallery. If you look ten years ago at our downtown, everybody knows what it was like. I feel because of the Rees, Opies, Blue Moon, all of them. Now, you're bringing up the Artistry. This is bar none, like the Rees, everybody else has done to this downtown area. So, I applaud you guys for doing what you do, and I'm going to echo what Dave and Don have said. We need to support this, and we need to get the job done and help you. And I'm going to agree on tabling it, and let's see what we can do. I know that, Randy, you have some other meetings tomorrow, correct? And I think with the powers to be, city attorney and the mayor, that I'm feeling that pretty positive that we can get this job done for you, but thank you for what you guys have done.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can echo that too, but I think without the Rees, you don't see the river, the Yellow River tap. I don't think you see the homes. I just, I don't think you see any of that without the Rees. I think the Rees is what sparked everything downtown, and for us to let that go would be a tragedy. And everywhere I go, I mean, I've been to several events, and everybody's always, the staff that's there visiting, or your assistants, or whatever, anytime you ever go there, you're always welcome. You feel like you're at home. It's a warm, built feeling every time you walk into that place. And it's, you know, it's kind of an all over list, that there are some other things that are priorities, but I think that if we look at it the long-term, I think everybody here will support it. Speaking of mayhem, will support it, but I agree that right now we got to find a way to get out of this.
I'll take it one step further also, Randy. The Plymouth Building is being reinvested in right now, too. When I ask them why, it's because of all they see going on, and the reason's a huge part of that. Why are these folks from South Bend and wherever they're from want to reinvest in our downtown and the Plymouth Building? And that's another reason, is just all this momentum, and it's just starting.
I'd like to just throw in my two cents. When I look around the room, I see many people who have actually been involved in all of the aspects, one way or another, some more than some others. But for me, it's an emotional issue, because I am on the board of the Rees, and I'm also on the executive committee. So, I won't be able to vote, but I can say what I think. It is, it has integrity, and it has capabilities of so many different things. And I think that we offer, people are so surprised when they go in and say, "Oh, you mean you're not in a shawn moves in here?" No, we can actually move the chairs and the tables, and you can have any kind of configuration that you can imagine. So, I, I think it's just such a different concept for many people who are attending for the first time. It's a wonderful place to have a special event, speaking personally. And I just, I just think, I haven't been on as long as the initial Dirty Dozen, but definitely it's kept it to my type of Rees. I just can't say enough for what, how I feel about the people and the mission of the Rees. Thank you.
My daughter graduated in three years, and I don't plan on having her graduation early there.
It's on the books.
Get now.
All right, well, very good, and.
I'm going to speak to people, tell me all the things. I'm going to just say thank you guys, because you literally have your free movies for kids, and then you have your senior movies for the elders. You're reaching everybody in the community. You're not just going one person or another. And Grandpa Jack celebrated his eightieth birthday at Opies, and then we had on the sign, "Jack Ringley 80." We had the big family picture there, and Grandma Jenny's going to be 92 this week. So, it's just awesome that you guys have been so amazing in the community, and we love you guys.
There you go.
So, you have our, you have the Ringley support, Frathwell support, all this support.
You have a preference.
We just got funding.
Yes.
I don't want to cut anybody else off, so anybody else? Thank you for not having Denny Bottom speak tonight. That saved us a lot of time. We'd be here till 9:30 if you, thanks. Whose call was that? Was that Randy's call? Don't let Denny speak.
We love Denny.
All right, we do have a motion to table in a second. Any further discussion, one last time? Hearing none? Roll call vote? I don't want to get in trouble. I don't want to delay us. Do a roll call vote, please.
Yes. Eckers?
Yes.
Grandpa?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Star?
Epstein.
Very good. We will, we'll go to work on this, so, not a problem. Okay, moving along. One Marshall County update tonight?
I'm not going to give any updates tonight.
Thank you. How about a comprehensive plan? He's not here either.
He's not here, so no one.
Very good. Privilege of the floor. Nobody stand up, please, okay? Honestly, you can if you want. Okay. Number eight, acceptance of communications.
Move to accept the communications in our packet.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion adjourned. Do I have a second? Thank you, everybody.
Way to step up.
I know, hey!